All right, good evening, everyone. This is the December 9th, 2020 Planning Board meeting at 7:00, and we're at the Carver Middle High School auditorium. And the public is invited to attend. Social distancing practices are in effect, and the proceedings will be videotaped and rebroadcast by Area 58 TV. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. All right, first on the agenda tonight is, oh, so who is with us tonight? So we have all our planning board members with us tonight. We have Richard Dionne, we have Ellen Sedillo, we have John Gadskey, and myself, Bruce Mackey, Kevin Robinson, and Cornelius Shea. And Jim, Planner Jim Walsh is with us tonight, too. And do we have anybody else joining us right now?
So we have online, we have Andy Jung, Julie Scott, and Rachel Clark. And I believe they're all with Syncarfa.
Okay, so that'll be heard in a few minutes. Boy, this is something new. I like this. Big screen TV tonight.
Yep.
All right. And do we have a sign-in sheet, Jim?
Yes, people have been signing it, and if they bring it down to the table, we'll have everything right there.
Okay, so if everybody here could, especially out in the audience, could make sure that So the first thing we have tonight is a sign permit, and it's Eat Fits at Two Montello Street. It's map 22-5-B-I. This is for discussion and possible vote. Jim, is there anything you can tell us about this?
Well, I was asking in the audience for the applicant, but they don't seem to be here. So I think we, unless we want to take a vote, but what they're asking for, if it's in the package, you have a copy of what the content of the sign would look like. If you have this in your package?
Yes, it was in, I did have one that I picked up today.
So it looks like they're asking for the wall sign plus the signage on the doorway. Both come to about 25.5 square feet of signage. The property is located in the Highway Commercial District. The Highway Commercial District allows two signs per business with a maximum of 32 square feet. So given the fact that it's less than the amount allowable, I think it's something that we can go ahead and approve. It looks like what they're proposing is nice and clean, and it's a nice presentation, I think.
So is there anybody here out in the audience representing this sign this evening? All right, so we don't have anybody out there, but it seems to me like it's pretty straightforward. I don't know, was there anybody on the board that wants to ask Jim any questions about this?
I have a question for Jim. Jim, sorry, I noticed on the application it says it's only 1.9 square feet of signage.
Yeah, I think that's a mistake. I went through and I did calculations, so 60 inches is about five feet, and then the 19 inches is about 1.5 feet. I multiplied them together to get the 7.5 square feet for the wall sign. And then I just made an estimate of, you know, three feet by six feet for the door, and that came out to the 18 square feet. So a lot of times, you know, we have people that come in and they're not really sure what the information is being requested.
Right.
So I think with the signs, in addition to having an overly complicated sign bylaw, we also have an overly complicated application form, and so people aren't filling it out right when they come in. But, you know, so just in the realm of trying to help them out, I just went through and did the calculations and said, okay, this is what I come up with.
Does it include their logo, or just, I understand you're only working off what you have.
Right.
I don't have an issue with it, but just so that when the application's processed, the square footage is...
Right, so I'm just counting, you know, what this is, and then also what's on the door. They're still well below the amount that they're allowed, so I think we can go ahead and approve it.
It's fine with me, I just want to clarify on the actual square footage on the application.
So I'm not sure what the, to be honest, I don't know if they, how they measured the, that little logo.
It doesn't take up three square feet, so not overly concerned.
Yeah, so we'll just make a note that it would include the logo, the Eat Fits, and then the door sign.
Jim, I have one more question. Are they putting a sign out on the, at the park?
Could you speak into the microphone?
Sorry, are they putting a sign out at the, on the main sign going into the shopping center?
I don't see anything in this application, but a lot of times the plazas have a separate permit for the, people call it the pylon sign or the freestanding sign.
Yeah, I just wondered, I didn't really notice anything here, I just...
Yeah, I don't have anything that indicates that that's what they're doing, but I'm going to make an assumption that they are.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Chair, just through you, just want to make a note, when people are speaking tonight, speak into the microphones. Having to have done the minutes, it helps a lot to have it, get the microphones right up to you so we can get good audio on that tape.
Yeah, it might be helpful to speak into the microphone, also give your name, because everybody's masked, so it's hard to figure out who's speaking. So it would be good so that we, because the minutes for the meeting will become up later from the video. So, yeah, if you could just give your name and then speak, that would be helpful to whoever's going to do the notes for the meeting. And I thank Jim for doing the notes for our last meeting. It's a task, especially, especially under the circumstances that we're in right now.
So thank God we have crummy weather on Saturday.
All right, so any more discussion about the sign? Could we vote on this tonight? And then, do you have something for us to sign tonight?
Yes.
I mean, the only reason I say it is, is I don't want this really to drag on to the next meeting, because our next meeting may not be for, as we will discuss later, for another month. So if, to me, this is pretty straightforward. It's not a big complicated thing. If we could just do this tonight, get this out of the way, so we can go on to bigger and better things in the future.
Right, that's my recommendation, too.
All right, I'm glad that we agree. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the sign permit for Eat Fits on Two Montello Street.
Slow motion, Cornelius Shea, slow motion.
A second. So we have a second by John Gadskey. So any more discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? And yeah, maybe we'll just, yeah, we could start from my right to the left, just give your name and...
Cornelius Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
John Gadskey, aye.
Ellen Sedillo, aye.
All right, thank you. So that was unanimous. Then you'll pass that around so we can sign that. All right, so the next public hearing is a public hearing continuation, and this is on the application of Syncarfa, Carver LLC requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections 2230, 3100, 3580, and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw. It's located at 104 Tremont Street, assesses map 123, lot 13, in Carver, Mass., to allow the construction of a 7.5-megawatt DC PV system and three array areas to be installed on land adjacent to inactive cranberry bogs at the Federal Furnace Cranberry Company property in a residential slash agricultural district. So I think most of the planning boards, I know, I'll just start off, we did go, we did start this at our last meeting. Since our last meeting, we did go on a site walk, and all the planning board members were with us except for John Gadskey at the time. And I just must say that, to me, this was a perfect spot for this solar array. We had, there are no neighbors that are around the property that can be seen. It's not near any roadways. It's not, this particular project is not going to go over any bog. It's going to be on the sides of bogs, and there, a lot of it's going to be in areas that have already been excavated out for sand, and some of it is, there are areas where small amounts of trees, and I must say, small amounts, trees are being cut down to allow for the solar panels. So to me, this is a perfect place for this type of solar project. So, I don't know, Jim, did you have anything to add to that?
Nope, there are very few comments by the peer reviewer, Andy Glines from Fussin' O'Neil. What I did, I made sure that in the draft decision I put together, that we added conditions based on his comments. We did get, so we got a paper copy of the response to comments on Friday, but we didn't get a chance to get the electronic version out to Andy and the fire department. But the applicant would still have to get, is one of the conditions, is that they still have to get kind of a sign-off or approval from the fire department on the roads. And then there's a number of items that Andy recommended that I incorporated into the conditions. So hopefully, we'll be all set with that.
Okay, so you do have conditions ready to present tonight?
Right, so we have those in your packets. I didn't know if you saw them or not, but I'll go find them.
Okay. I know there were some questions by planning board members, and there are people, are there people in the audience here tonight? Okay. I think one of the questions was about the battery storage and about any kind of, in case there was a fire, any kind of chemical spillage. I know that we've had these before, and it was basically explained to the planning board that anything would be contained in the trailer unit where these batteries are being stored. But technology is changing all the time, so if you could explain how this is going to work.
Sure. So Rob Bukowski representing Syncarfa, yeah, the battery storage units are self-contained. It's basically like a Connex box or a C container. It's a dry suppressant, so if there were a fire, each box has its own isolated system, and if there were a fire in it, the dry agent would get, you know, basically applied to the fire, and everything is self-contained within that box. And in the supplemental information and response to comments, we included an SDS sheet on the actual agent itself and some information on the batteries.
Has this been looked at by the fire department?
Yeah, we talked to them at the technical review committee meeting about it. So, I mean, it's a relatively new thing that people are looking at, but they're aware of it. And the other thing that Syncarfa will do prior to operating the system is provide training to the fire department on how to address things like, you know, if there were an incident within the array or the battery unit.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, any questions by any of the planning board members?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Richard Dionne.
Yeah, Richard Dionne. On these solar arrays, what's your responsibility on maintaining these, such as if there was a grass fire and it burnt the solar panels up? What is your response time in replacing these panels, or is it your responsibility?
Yeah, so Syncarfa's responsible for everything within the lease area. One of the provisions that was included is a mowing schedule, and it was requested to mow twice per year in order to try to reduce that potential for having a grass fire. If there were an incident that happened, Syncarfa would, it's in their best interest to try to replace and repair what's needed as quickly as possible.
So it's not up to you?
Yeah.
To me personally?
Well, the company, that's what I meant.
Yeah, so it's Syncarfa's responsibility.
It is, yeah. It's, they have a timeframe on when it has to be done. Like, for instance, if you had it, does it have to be done like within, you know, a month or two, or can it just sit in limbo until they feel like fixing it?
I don't know, I mean, I don't know what the agreement is if something like that happens, if there's something in the lease agreement or that it has to be done within a certain amount of time. But, you know, Syncarfa's model on this is based on a certain level of generation, so if they're not generating that much power, then, you know, ultimately makes it less worth it. So it's, again, in their best interest to do it as quickly as possible so they can get back up to the generation that they're expecting.
Okay.
All right, I'm sorry, Cornelius Shea, to continue on his, if a panel becomes inoperable, what is the standard operating procedure for that?
They would replace it. So these systems are monitored remotely, so they'll, you know, they get reports through the data acquisition system that'll tell if there's a certain area of the array that's not performing as expected. And usually, that's when they would send somebody out to look at it. If they're seeing something that the production isn't what was modeled or what was expected, then that's usually when they'll send someone out.
And if a panel cracks or leaks and is exposed to the environment, do you have a cleanup plan listed in here? Because I haven't seen any of this information. I mean, I have the original submission, but I haven't seen the updated submission. That wasn't, I didn't get that till we walked in the room, so I haven't had a chance to look through it.
I mean, if it cracks, they would, if it stops producing electricity, they'll replace the panel. As far as it being cracked and being exposed to the environment, there's nothing hazardous in these. It's basically silicone glass, so, you know, it can sit for a period of time. The panels that I've seen that are cracked, sort of like a windshield when it cracks, so it's not like it explodes, it's just...
Oh, I was more curious, does it contain oils or...
There's no heavy metals or anything like that.
Okay, all right. What about if there is a fire and the fire suppressor goes off? Do you have any sort of cleanup plan or actions?
Well, they, so Syncarfa would get notified if something happened, and then they'd have to send people out to basically go in and clean it out. And again, they're, you know, they would want to get this back up and running and operating as expected as quickly as possible.
Jim, did you have something to say?
Through the chair. I believe the system is a dry system versus a wet system, so it's a powder, and I believe when reviewing some of the materials, it said the powder was non-toxic, or the materials that use for the fire suppressor are non-toxic.
Right, that's right.
Oh, okay, yeah, that answers the question.
And there is, I know you haven't had a chance to look at, but there's an SDS sheet in there. I don't know what that chemical is. It's listed, it's very long, there's a lot of numbers, but no, it's...
Don't talk like Israeli when I'm shooting forward.
Right.
Any other questions? Ellen, yes.
Ellen Sedillo, I'm just curious, if any kind of wildlife would get on one of those, would it damage the animal?
It could, I mean, I've never, we've been doing inspections on some of these systems that have been operating for years. I've never seen an animal up on top of them. I mean, they are tilted at an angle. We've seen animals inside the array. Sometimes deer can jump over the fence, and we've seen things like coyotes.
But a bird or something like that would you land on it?
I mean, if a bird landed on it, I wouldn't envision any real damage.
Yeah, just to, I've got solar at the house, and it's a ground, it's a ground out system, just basically a small version of what these guys have. It's, everything is solid. All you got to, all you got to do is blow the dust off, take a broom or something like that, sweep the snow off or something like that. They're very reliable, very safe, long-lasting types, these solar panels are, they're built to take it.
So they're not hot to the touch?
No, no, the only, if they're hot, it's because the sun is directly on them.
That's about it, yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it would be like the hood of your car, so...
Mr. Chair, through you, did we get a breakdown of how many telephone poles we were going to be putting in on this to carry the battery power?
You mean down, near Tremont Street?
Yeah.
So there's nine poles that'll be installed by Syncarfa, and there are six poles that'll be installed by Eversource.
Okay.
And those are shown, that was one of the comments that Fussin' O'Neil had, so that's included now on the updated drawing.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions by any of the board members?
Is...
John.
Is the property owner here tonight or anything?
Walter Morrison is here, he represents.
Yes, sir, the question I have, they're, with the cranberry bogs being, they're still active, correct? I noticed from the, from the aerial views and everything that, unfortunately, I wasn't able to go down and look at everything, but the area where the, where the panels are going to be going in has been used a lot for sand mining and stuff like that. Are you guys, do you have another plan for where you're going to be mining the sand, and how is that going to affect the wetlands or anything else like that?
If you could give us your name first, please.
Walter Morrison, trustee at Federal Furnace Cranberry.
Push the, bring the microphone closer to...
Bring the, yeah, microphone closer to you, and kind of get a really...
Sorry.
Yeah.
Walter Morrison, Federal Furnace Cranberry. The area that you're talking about on the right-hand side, driving in in the road, where Gil Lopes Company has been clearing the area, that area had, yes, some sand was mined out of it, is also an area where previous bog strippings, when we refurbished a bog, had gone to. There was boulders in that area, there were stumps in that area, it was a kind of a hodgepodge of a mess.
Okay.
And it got, basically, it's in the process of being made into an area which is more conducive for the solar array. That was a permitted, we'd already come to the town of Carver for permits for that one area itself, there's a special permit. When that area is done, that's it in that area. There was one other area that was started, I think 12 years ago, and that is nearing the end of its life, too, that also was permitted. And there's refurbished bogs going into that area, the last three and a half acres of refurbished bog is going in this next spring.
Oh, okay.
At that point, then, will be done.
All right.
There are no further plans currently in the works for more sand and gravel removal.
Okay.
Just sand for our own operations, obviously.
Right, right, okay. Whenever you do remove sand and gravel from the property, though, you have to apply for permits from the town of Carver from the earth removal committee, right?
Yes, we know that, and we've always complied with that.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't know if the other members of the board knew that, just wanted to make, make that clear. I mean, you just, yeah, you just don't go out and just start excavating large amounts of sand without first getting permitted for that?
No, it's always been permitted, as a matter of fact, the first permit we went, we went through Conservation Commission, too, so that they went through there, and they went over the property to be sure we weren't doing any burnout pools or anything like that.
Mm-hmm. Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Chair, just a point of order is that the Conservation Commission has reviewed this project, issued a notice of intent, and I included a copy in your packets.
Okay, all right. All right, any other questions by board members? Seeing none, the public hearing is still open on this, so is there anyone on the audience that would, that has any questions or would like to speak about this project? Seeing no one, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, so it's Cornelius Shea.
I'll second that motion.
Kevin Robinson, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's do a roll call vote, starting with Mr. Shea.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
John Gadskey, aye.
Ellen Sedillo, aye.
Okay, thank you, so that was unanimous. So the public hearing is closed. Let's move on to, Jim, do you want to read the, what you have written?
All right, so for conditions, condition number one, prior to the issuance of a building permit, a true copy of the recorded decision as registered at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds shall be submitted to the Planning and Permitting Department. 1B, the applicant shall provide the Planning and Permitting Department with documentation of Eversource's approval of the proposed interconnection. 1C, the applicant shall provide an updated grading plan in the areas where grading and/or solar removal activities are ongoing. solar removal activities are ongoing. One D, the developer shall submit and maintain a ground fuels manicuring and maintenance schedule to the Planning and Permitting Department and the Carver Fire Department. The Carver Fire Department shall approve the ground fuels maintenance schedule. Manicuring of ground fuels shall occur twice per year at a minimum during the growing season. One E, developer shall submit an emergency response plan to the Carver Fire Department and Planning and Permitting Department. One F, any outstanding balance of the review and inspections deposit account shall be paid prior to issuance of a building permit. One G, the applicant shall receive approval from the Planning Board for all signage required under section 3580.26.2. Item H, the applicant shall submit to the Permitting Department updated product information for all the major components, including make and model of PV panels, transfer, transformer, inverter, mounting system, chemicals for cleaning, and maintenance of equipment be provided as part of the building permit submission. One I, the applicant shall submit the name, address, and contact information for the system installer as part of the building permit submission. Item number two, prior to issuance of an electrical permit, two A, the applicant shall provide the board with a decommissioning bond for $169,234.98 for decommissioning costs as indicated in the CS Energy Decommissioning Study found in Attachment C of the Response to Review Comments dated December 3, 2020. Item two B, the applicant shall ensure compliance with the National Electrical Requirements on Access, Fencing, and Security. A statement of compliance shall be submitted to the Building Commissioner and Planning Director by the Electrical Inspector. Item two C, final electrical line diagram stamped by a licensed professional engineer shall be submitted to the town with the building permit submission. Item number three, the project shall be constructed according to the approved site plan and decision. The solar panels shall not exceed 11 feet in height. Any revisions to the project will require approval from the board as a modification of this decision. And number four, the applicant shall conform to the recommendations of the Carver Fire Department found in the comment letters dated, comment letter dated November 20, 2020. The Carver Fire Department must approve in writing any modifications to its recommendations. Number five, clearing limits shall be marked in the field prior to clearing and the Planning Board notified to allow them the opportunity to verify clearing extents prior to beginning clearing activities. Item number six, the applicant shall provide a final construction period pollution prevention and erosion and sediment control plan to the Planning and Permitting Department prior to the commencement of construction. Item number seven, dust controls required during construction and the roadway apron is to be kept swept and clear of any dust, dirt, or debris. Item number eight, construction equipment and trucks shall not idle or operate on site prior to 7:00 a.m. Construction activities shall occur, shall only occur Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Item number nine, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy and use, A, the applicant shall provide trainings to the Fire Department for mitigating emergencies on site. B, the applicant shall obtain a written acceptance of the final condition of access roads from the Carver Fire Department. Nine C, as-built plans shall be submitted to the Towns Engineer and Permitting Department in both electronic and hard copy form prior to the final inspection. And nine D, in accordance with section 3180, compliance of the zoning bylaws, the Towns Engineer shall inspect the project to ensure that it's been completed in compliance with the approved site plan and its conditions. Number 10, the applicant shall provide the Carver Planning Department with an annual report certifying compliance with the operation and maintenance plan and providing annual generation of the facility in accordance with section 3580.43. Operation and maintenance plans shall include a schedule for maintenance and inspection activities. And item number 11, the applicant shall provide the Planning and Permitting Department and Carver Fire Department with updated contact information should there be a change in ownership and/or management of the solar project within 30 days of any change. And any appeal to this decision shall be filed pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 117, and be filed within 20 days of the filing of this decision with the town clerk.
All right, thank you, Jim. Okay, for the board members, is there, are there any questions or any additions or deletions?
Well, referring to Mr. Dion's question, Cornelia Shea, I would recommend that if a certain percentage of the solar panels are inactive, that they either be replaced or removed within a structured timeline. Because technically, I don't think if they're not working, then they aren't really part of the project any longer in its storage of materials. I think we're dealing with this on Route 44 right now. I believe they had a fire and some catastrophic solar panel failure that's been hanging around for some time. So I just think that that's a fair condition to include in there, but I'll leave it up to the board.
Do you want to, well, to me, that's, Bruce Mackey, to me, that's up to the company that owns the field, what they, what they want to do with it. I don't see how that affects the footprint of the solar panel system itself.
It wouldn't affect the footprint of the solar panels. It would be more along the lines of if it's not a solar panel, then it's not part of the project any longer.
All right.
Well, the, if you.
Richard Dion.
Sorry, sorry, John Gasky.
Oh, John Gasky, I'm sorry.
So if you look under Attachment B, under repairs, number one, to the extent that the system components can be repaired in the field, Sincarfa will engage appropriate personnel to perform the repairs. And number two, Sincarfa may replace equipment if they are deemed irreparable based on troubleshooting. So I think it's already been spelled out in their, in their maintenance plan that they would affect repairs as soon as possible. Once they're, once they're aware of everything.
Thank you for clarifying.
Get people out there, yeah. Yeah, I was.
Bruce Mackey, Jim, I just want to ask a question. The Fire Department has looked at this.
They have looked at it. They're going to give a final review once we get the materials to them, but didn't get a response back. But you kind of, I put that condition in that they have to accept the roads, which is one of their bigger conditions.
Okay.
There's a condition dealing with training for the, for the array plus the battery system. So they've had a chance to look at it and comment on it. One of the other items they asked for is the manicuring around the site, and that's in one of the conditions. Let's find it. Okay, that's one D, the developer shall submit and maintain a ground fuels manicuring and maintenance schedule. So that's the typical request of the Fire Department. And then I also just referenced in general the Fire Department letter, which in that letter, you know, we asked them that they have, the applicant has to conform to the request of the Fire Department. So in that letter, you know, it deals with lock boxes, you know, the roadways going into the site. And then also has, in the beginning of the section, deals with the energy storage system requirements that they have. So there is a letter, it's dated November 20, 2020. It's in your packets, so it's available. You know, all those, all those are part of the condition is that you have to go back to that letter and adhere to the requirements of that letter. And if there's any changes, so for example, if there's something in the letter that, say the applicant can't comply with, they work with the Fire Department to come up with a procedure so that that way, everything is to the satisfaction of the Fire Department.
We have new members here, and I forget that if this is the first solar panel project we've had before, some of our new members here. But if you want to just tell us how the decommissioning bond, I noticed that you had a figure on that, how do we, how does the Planning Board come up with that?
Right. So the applicant hires a third party to come up with an estimate. In this case, it was CS. Inside the document dated December 3 that you have in your packets, it has a whole analysis of how they came up with that. Fortunately, I gave away my version of that, so I don't have it in front of me to refer to. But it's in, it's in the book and it shows the whole, you know, what they do. So they have to kind of go out, they protect 20 years out, they estimate what it would cost to remove all the equipment. There's also a factor for salvage value of the project, and then they put in an inflation factor, and then it comes out to that $169 and change.
Okay. We usually use, what, 125% of the, of the total estimate of the project?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted, just wanted that explained to the board members. And I know a lot of times when we're going to these things, some of the residents want to know how we come up with that. There's always questions about decommissioning and what will happen with the field and who will provide the money to decommission it afterwards. So I just, so I thank you for explaining that.
You're welcome.
Anything else by any of the board members? Like I said, I thought, I don't, well, we've been, oh, we do. Okay, Ellen.
Ellen Sodillo, just wondering about security, you know, to make sure that there's no vandalizing or, are there cameras or cameras up or something somewhere?
No, so no cameras are proposed, but it's a seven-foot-high fence. And it's in a fairly remote location, it's on private property. So usually the seven-foot-high fence keeps people out.
Should. Unless they really don't.
I have a question about whether there are cameras on site.
Right, cameras. How is the, what is, what is the security for the site?
Oh, yeah, in addition to fencing, we actually do install cameras on the site to monitor the commission.
And that, within the fenced area, you know, each of the fenced areas where you have the solar arrays?
Correct, yeah.
So there is cameras.
Yeah. Usually, what, two to three cameras within the fenced areas will be coming for a view of the site.
Thank you.
And I would take, that would also help out if there's any damage or something innocent going on with the solar panels, then that enables the company to see that, and then they could send someone out to respond to it.
So are these cameras mounted on the fence or are they mounted on poles?
I believe they're mounted on long poles in the corner of the fence line.
Okay. Yep, that's the, that's the first time we've encountered that in our solar panel projects. So that's interesting.
Yeah, and also there's like this snowstorm too, so we can see if, you know, we're going to be generating power from the panels.
And so these cameras are monitored 24/7?
Yeah, they're operational 24/7, that's right.
That's interesting. That's the first. But thank you for that information. Anybody else have anything else? Jim, do you have anything further to say? All right, we have closed the public hearing. Jim has read the conditions. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the project of, of the application of Sincarfa Carver LLC at 104 Tremont Street with the conditions as stated.
I'll make the motion to, to vote for.
So John Gasky.
The conditions as stated, yeah.
Okay. So John Gasky made the motion. Ellen, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll start with Mr. Shea.
Cornelia Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
John Gasky, aye.
Ellen Sodillo, aye.
All right, thank you. So that was unanimous. And do we have that to sign tonight or will you have to?
Don't we have that?
All right. The conditions. Okay, you're welcome. Thank you. Okay, well, the conditions of, Jim gets the conditions so that the Planning Board members can sign that. Let's go on. We have a public hearing to open tonight. And let me read the public hearing notice. Those, the public hearing notice, in accordance with the provisions of the Town of Carver Zoning Bylaw, the Carver Planning Board will hold a public hearing on December 9, 2020 at 7:00 p.m. at the Carver Middle/High School Auditorium at 60 Meadow Road in Carver, Mass. on the application of Cape Way Cannabis, Inc. Co-, what's it, C- O, so that's what, co-owner or care of Lori Hugh, requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections 2200, 2300, 2330, 3100, 4950, 5,05300 of the Carver Zoning Bylaw located at 307-307A Tremont Street, which is Assessors Map 95WAT 3-A-E in Carver, Mass. The applicant is proposing a non-medical marijuana retail establishment in the general business, or GB, in non-medical marijuana overlay district/retail zoning districts. Any person that's interested and wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the plan is on file at the Planning Department and may be reviewed during normal business hours. Carver Planning Board, Bruce Mackey, Chair, and the published dates were November 13th and November 20th of 2020. Good evening. I guess if you just give us your name and proceed, please.
Thank you for having us. My name is Kevin Howe. I'm a managing consultant with Cape Way Cannabis, and I also own the property at 307 Tremont Street. We're here tonight to ask the Planning Board for a special permit for recreational marijuana retail facility at 307 Tremont Street. I'm just going to put up the slides just so you can see them as we go. Each of you have one of these, a copy of this in front of you as well?
Mm-hmm.
Should be down in the lower corner, just looks like.
If you can just go to the next screen. I'd like to introduce our team that's here tonight. Obviously Kevin Howe, project manager. Our attorney at Engle is here. Our project engineer, Tom Pizerski, is here from Merrill Engineering. Our project architect, Paul Ballou, from Main Street Architects. Our security specialist, Dan Chauvin, from NSG Life Safety. And our traffic consultant, Sean Kelly, from Venise Associates. This isn't the first cannabis project for our team. Most of us here have worked on other projects throughout the state and are very familiar with the state and local regulations. Cape Way Cannabis has been working with the Town of Carver since 2018. We started with Steve Cole prior to your 2019 town meeting, and we helped craft some of the bylaws. We actually came to a couple of your planning board meetings and answered some of the questions that were asked about the bylaws and how they were put together back prior to the vote in 2019 at your town meeting. Also, you and next slide. Also is our management team, Michelle Howe, president, Lori Howe, vice president, and Stephen Howe, chief operating officer. And there's a list of our board directors. Cape Way Cannabis is a locally-owned family business. Cape Way Cannabis will be one of the few minority-owned marijuana licensees in Massachusetts, 100% woman-owned. The ownership and management team at Cape Way are locals with immediate ties to the South Coast communities. We are not a big cannabis subsidiary with connections to out-of-state or multinational cannabis firms. We live here, we're personally invested, and we care about the communities we work in. The property at 307 Tremont Street is within the approved marijuana overlay district by the Town of Carver for recreational cannabis establishments. The property currently contains a one-story building with parking and a modular building which will be used for the time being for non-cannabis material storage. The existing 2,500-square-foot, one-story building at the front of the site closest to Tremont Street is proposed to be renovated to create a facility that includes a recreational cannabis retail store, storage area, and corporate offices. The proposed location complies with state mandate 500-foot buffer zone from public or private schools. Here's an overview of the property. The existing building will be outfitted as our corporate office and retail store, and will not change much in appearance except to build out a secure and attractive entrance more befitting of a boutique retail shop. At this time, I'm going to ask Tom Pizerski, our senior project manager and professional engineer with Merrill Engineering, to come up and go over the site review. Tom's slides are in your packet. They didn't make it onto the screen, because we just didn't feel that you'd be able to see them from up there.
Thank you, folks, my name is Tom Pizerski from Merrill Engineers in Plymouth. I'm the senior project manager on the property. In this particular instance here, we're going to take and we're going to renovate the entire exterior of the site, and I'm talking to site plan issues. What we're doing with the property is we're going to take that existing drive, we're going to line it better so you can come in from the site, we're going to put a 24-foot-wide drive. The curb throats coming in are going to comply with mass DOT standards, even though this isn't a mass highway. We've taken, and I like the circular pattern that we've produced here. Handicap parking is in the middle, and the access aisle for them to come across is right in the middle of the site, so they're not close to the site. When they come out of their cars and they enter the back of the site, that's where the entrance is going to be. There's going to be advanced receiving station, and we've got a Sherpentine sidewalk, everything's going to be made ADA accessible on the site, and you'll have enough room for 25 people or so to wait socially distanced outside. That's why we have such an extensive sidewalk area out here. And yes, we can put a canopy over the handicap accessible ramps. They'll enter from the back, a lot of these areas, he'll talk the operations, but it's pre-order, so they don't spend much time here. As far as zoning is concerned, it's appropriately zoned, this lot is designated in that zone. We are not making anything more non-conforming on the law. In fact, pretty much the whole project complies with the zoning requirements for setbacks, frontages, coverages of way under parking required. According to the town's standards, there's 16 spaces with one ADA accessible space. We're providing 29 spaces here with two additional ADA spaces, and it's advanced van-accessible space. As far as the interior landscaping, we do meet that. We're required 1,878 square feet. We've got over 2,100 square feet, but what we're doing is we're putting it out on the perimeters, on the corners. And in doing so, that serves as a very important purpose, because we need to make sure that we have fire safety access in here, and we met with the technical review board meeting, the Carver Fire Department was there, the police were there. And what we did is we applied the turning radius for Plymouth Ladder 1. I don't know if you're familiar with that truck, but that's the largest ladder truck that you can buy. Plymouth just got it a little while ago. We used that turning template, and that can operate in and out of here. So if that can get in and out of here, any other emergency vehicle can get in and out of here, and the deputy chief agrees with that. Stormwater, you're going to see some significant stormwater improvements with this proposal. The first thing that we did is we did soil exams to determine what the subsurface conditions were, where groundwater was, and then we made sure that our stormwater treatment train was elevated properly above the groundwater, which it is. And the system basically consists of what I call country drainage, but it's very effective, and it complies with DEP stormwater regulations. You have a P-stone diaphragm, which is the initial flush, then this grass line swirls provide additional treatment, we have check dams to slow things down, we have sediment traps proposed out here, and then the final treatment train is the rain garden, and each one of these has emergency overflows that are designed for the 100-year frequency storm, and yes, we did use the higher rainfall amounts for this. One interesting thing is when the project's said and done, we're going to have less pavement that's presently there, we're going to do the parking lot completely over. And our stormwater treatment measures, just to give you an example, some of the requirements between 1343 and 808 cubic feet needed to treat, and we're providing 3,436 cubic feet at the end treatment train. So we're far exceeding the standards there. We have full emergency access, and the lighting, which we will clarify, I apologize for the lighting sheets, I don't make the regulations up, but we get them, we got to show the photometrics, and they look messy. But what you can see is when you look at the outside of those light illumines, they're on the property. We received Fussman O'Neil's letter today, and there really wasn't anything that I saw major in it, we will address that, and we will get back to Fussman O'Neil and make sure they're satisfied. We'll keep Jim Pulley plugged in, and then hopefully we get a clean bill of health the next time that we come before you guys on this, and ladies. So if you have any questions, please let me know. Oh, one thing on the landscaping that I didn't mention is because of the nature of this business, the cannabis control regulations don't allow us to do extensive landscaping around the building, so people can't hide or conceal themselves. The areas need to be secure, so that's why you don't see any landscaping there. We've put more on the outside, we've put some extensively in the landscape plots. And then the rest of the areas, and you're probably familiar with the site, is naturally vegetated around a lot of it there, with the creamed bugs down back and the wetlands out in the back. We do have an alternative parking plan, I'm going to update that, we looked into that a little bit with the board of health, and we're going to rearrange that so we don't go over the set thick so much. And if we need it, we'll build it, but we don't think we're going to need it. I'll let, I won't take the traffic engineers' thunder away from them, but you'll see with the turnaround and the amount of people that we have here, our traffic is far less than you would have from a Dunkin' Donuts or McDonald's. People usually pre-order, and they're in and out of there in minutes, so we should have more than adequate parking as needed for this. Are there any questions?
All right, before anybody asks any questions, if there are any, I'd just like to say the procedure that we're going to follow for this project. Generally, we'll have the initial hearing tonight, we'll have people, I see there's people out in the audience, they may want to ask questions. We'll schedule a site walk, so all the planning board members can go out there, we'll probably have the parking lot corners marked, any kind of features that the planning board members will want to see, we'll have them marked out in the field. So we'll schedule a time that we can get together with the applicant and with Jim Walsh and the planning board members, and then we'll go, this will go to another meeting anyway, at least one more meeting. So it'll give people, you can certainly ask questions tonight, but it'll give people, the planning board members, some time to look over the plans, and there will be time for additional questions by planning board members and also anybody in town that wants to come to the second round of meetings to ask questions. The site visit is just for planning board members only, and we'll schedule that later this evening as we hear more from the applicant.
And Mr. Chairman, if you could, I know it doesn't clearly need to be this evening, but if there are things that you want marked out on the site, please let Jim know, and we'll make sure that that's accomplished.
We will, we'll do that tonight before we conclude this meeting. All right, anybody have any questions right off the bat here tonight? Or does everybody kind of?
Okay, Mr. Chair. If I'm not mistaken, this is, is House of Worship currently on this property, or are they no longer there?
They're gone. Yes, we own the property now. We haven't let family, the property's family stay, the property's police security, they've already done, we have to take their money, most in there. We're getting ready to vote next week.
All right.
Yeah, I was just, did you have a question?
I do, Cornelius Shea. Have you filed abbreviated notes of intent with CONCOM yet? Have you dealt with CONCOM at all?
No, we already have our order of conditions, we filed and received approval, I received the order of conditions in the mail yesterday, as a matter of fact.
Excellent. What's your planned operating hours?
Monday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and on Sunday, 12:00.
All right.
We're going to get into more of those, we'll probably get away your questions that we didn't get.
Okay, yeah, sure, no. Deliveries, I expect they're going to be done at least an hour before closing time?
All deliveries, we may prefer it this time.
Will employees be screened through the local police department?
That's not a problem, they, the police department does all screening through state. We supply that information.
Sure, no, I'm just curious if they were screened really, weren't they anything? Will violations be reported to the local police department?
Yeah, I think if you could please step up to the microphone.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I apologize, when I asked if there were any questions, I meant were there any questions for the engineering, the site engineer? But I think what you'll find is if we go through the presentation, a lot of these questions will be answered, and if there's others, we'll be able to address it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to cover all of it, probably 99% of the questions we have this evening in our presentation. So we'll continue our presentation. I'd like to have Paul Ballou from Main Street Architects come up and move in the building, changes in the layout.
Paul Ballou, Main Street Architects, Waymouth, Massachusetts. We worked closely with Merrill Associates and Tom Pizerski. As you can see here from the building, we're not going to change too much about the outside appearance. We removed all the operable windows, we're going with fixed windows. Jim, can you switch to the next plan? The next one. We worked with Tom in the parking, we worked with accommodating 521 CMR and anti-conditions for guidelines. We're bringing everybody across to a central check-in station, which you can see at the top right there of the sidewalk. We set it up for obviously COVID restrictions and making sure that we had adequate space to accommodate everybody within inside and outside. Another big thing with these is separation of public and private. If you can see the way we work everyone in the back, and we keep it all to the side, there is a clear separation of public retail space versus private offices. And then if we go to the next slide, Jim? We also worked at a separation of storage, obviously a lot of things come up about security and whatnot, so the basement, you know, access for storage is for management only. Upstairs, we have offices and employee areas which are separate from public and retail areas. We also worked with, the cleanest way we can get people in and out of this building, in a safe fashion obviously as well. And we worked with the lighting photometrics to make sure that we have enough to cover the property and that we have enough to cover people waiting in line, and how we're going to handle that. And the last thing, can you go back one slide, Jim? Would be, we worked with a way to come up with a, they're going to be less than 50, but we worked with a way to come up with accessible bathrooms that can be used through the public, which you can see at the top left there.
External signs will not use language depicted in imagery or otherwise advertise in any way that suggests establishment as a pot shop or that weed is produced or available. Per state law, no pictures of pot leaves or any other marijuana-related imagery, no message boards or promotional signs that list marijuana products and/or prices, absolutely zero visibility into the facility or the store from the street or parking lot.
Excuse me, I have a question. There's two buildings on that property, correct?
Correct.
What's happening to the other building?
We're just going to use, as we addressed, it's being used for non-marijuana storage, so it's just going to be an outbuilding for us, we might put some offices in there, but nothing, no marijuana products will be over there or anything like that.
So the house will be non-marijuana?
Yes.
Just office spaces?
We're really probably just going to use it for office space. Yeah, we will only keep marijuana products in the front building. Let me go to the next slide, Jim. Just to touch a little bit on traffic before I hand this over to Sean Kelly. The associated traffic issues highlighted in the news following the opening of marijuana retailers in Massachusetts now largely have subsided and are no longer a major concern. Fairlife in Wareham no longer requires shuttle service. By the time Cape Way Cannabis opens for business, there will be several retailers open in neighboring towns. The retail store should expect to serve a few hundred customers per day, typical of a liquor store would do. The site will provide 29 off-street parking spaces. Strict rules for no parking on-street will be enforced. Detailed officers will be employed if determined to be necessary by us or the Carver Police Department at our own expense. We're prepared to implement shuttle service if necessary, and we're prepared to implement appointment-only call-in online pre-orders during peak traffic hours if necessary. I'd now like to ask Sean Kelly to come up and go over the traffic study that was performed. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, Sean Kelly with Venasen Associates. On behalf of the project team, thank you again for having us tonight. It pleases the board, what I'd like to do is just take a few minutes to walk you through our traffic assessment, how it was conducted, what our findings and recommendations are, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions that members of the board or audience may have. If you could advance a slide, Jim. So I think we're, you know, we're probably all somewhat familiar with the project site. Again, it's today, it's a vacant building that was previously a house of worship. It is on the western side of Tremont Street, which is Route 58. As Tom pointed out, Route 58 is a state-numbered route, however, in this stretch of the corridor, it's not under mass DOT jurisdiction, it's under Town of Carver jurisdiction, so as such there's no permits required from the state associated with this project. The corridor provides one lane in each direction with both three-foot shoulders. Traffic volumes in the corridor, about 18,000 cars a day on a weekday, about 13,500 on
conditions are today. We went out and collected the volumes, we looked at vehicle speeds as well. One of the things that we really focus on with these types of projects is ensuring safe access and egress. We look at the required sightlines, and we do it based on the, what we call the 85th percentile travel speed, the high end of the actual speed on the corridor, not the posted speed limit, to assure we're meeting the safety requirements for the actual travel speeds out there. If you can advance a slide, Jim. With respect to the project's traffic, we rely on data that's published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, or the ITE. And what the ITE does is they go over and count existing operational facilities, and then based on those counts, allow us to predict how much traffic a project of a certain size will generate based on the data they have from sites that are already open for business. And what it tells us is that this project will do about 55 trips during the evening commuter hour, so you've got a little under 30 cars entering, a little under 30 cars exiting, it's about a car every other minute. And then the Saturday midday is really the busier time, where you'll have about 91 cars. So you're pushing about a car per minute entering and about a car per minute exiting. It's important to note that not, not all of the corridor will experience this increase. You know, some of the traffic's going to come from the north, some's going to come from the south. There is the 495 interchange further south of us. So no, any given segment of the corridor will experience about less than a car every other minute in the evening and less than a car per minute, again, on that Saturday midday. If you could advance one more. So, you know, conclusion, you know, we looked at the crash characteristics in the area. There haven't been, the industry says, look at the last five years, there've been, there've been no crashes in this segment of Route 58 in the vicinity of the site, so there were no safety deficiencies. We also looked at, the state has what's known as the H-SIP Highway Safety Improvement Program map, which says if an area has other safety concerns, and none of the locations that we looked at were part of that inventory. Again, the project is, it will do about 55 trips in the evening and about 91 trips on a Saturday, that's, you know, ins and outs. We looked at the onsite parking. Based on the ITE data, again, they look at sites to see what the parking accumulation is. We're projecting a maximum demand of about 18 spaces being occupied, and again, we're providing 31, so we meet and exceed the peak demand that we predict. Our recommendations, even though it's not a mass DOT road, we recommend that certainly the access be designed to mass DOT standards with regard to signage, pavement markings, ensuring that any vegetation, whether it's plantings or signage, don't restrict sightlines either north or south on Route 58. And then, and then really, I think one of the more critical things is that, you know, as was pointed out, as more and more of these shops open, what we're finding is that the traffic volumes that are generated are diminishing because there's simply more competition. But typically, when they do open, you will have that, you know, that initial opening period where there's a certain level of curiosity and people want to come down and just see what it's all about. We recommend that the applicant work with the police department to have an initial parking and traffic management plan. Typically, that could involve police details during peak hours for a short, you know, opening period, additional staff onsite to help circulation and parking within the project itself, and potentially using, you know, appointment-only if necessary during those, that initial opening period. So that really is our, is our assessment in a nutshell. We're going to be more than happy to answer any questions that the members of the board have. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Kevin Robinson.
How do you come up with, Kevin Robinson, how do you come up with a projected entering and exiting?
Sure.
Since there's no business there right now?
Well, this is the, this is what we're projecting, that the dispensary will do when it opens. So what happens is, you know, there are, there are a number of dispensaries across the nation, and the Institute of Transportation Engineers or the ITE, they actually, you know, through other traffic engineering firms, go and count operational businesses. Quite frankly, a lot of the data that the ITE uses is from, you know, Colorado or other states where legalization came online prior to Massachusetts. So they'll look at a site and say, you know, 4,000 square foot dispensary did this much traffic, a 3,000 square foot dispensary did this much traffic. And then they just use data regression and basically create an equation and a rate that says for X amount of square feet, this is the kind of traffic you could, you're going to expect. We take that, those equations and rates, we apply it to the proposed size of the store, and it gives us what we can expect for traffic. And the ITE does this for a whole host of land uses, office use, residential uses, other retail uses, but for this specific project, we use what's known as Land Use Code 882 marijuana dispensary, which is purely dated from operational dispensaries within the United States. So that's, that's the basis for the framework as to how we model what the projected traffic is.
Thank you. I personally know that when I order a sub at the Berry Guys, that sometimes I wait a good five minutes for a car to pass me by, so I'm just wondering how that would break down to 28. But that was why I asked that question, how you get the projected number.
Sure.
Any other questions by board members?
I'll ask one. I expect this is traffic-related.
Connelly Shae.
Yes, Connelly Shae, sorry. What sort of accommodations have you made to prevent queuing on the road?
In terms of on the main line?
On Tremont Street. Now, you've told us it's all appointment-driven, but we know a lot of people aren't going to think that, they're going to rush down to the shop and check it out.
Sure.
What sort of resources or what have you done to prevent, like, queuing up on the street or people circling the parking lot, looking for spaces?
Will we?
Do you want to hear what you've researched? Do you want to talk about that?
Sure.
Tom Pizerski from Maryland is. So basically, what we've done is, we've taken this drive, we've lined it up, you can see, as you come into the site, there's no parking spaces right in that area there, so that automatically allows for several vehicle queues. And you can see, we've taken advantage of the entire length of that parking lot, so you have from where you come in all the way to the back, where the cars can queue in, there's more than adequate width of circulation around there. And then the other thing is that people have staff on place, and then you will supplement the necessary to guide people and where they need to go, where they need to park. So it's a pretty well-organized professional system that they have. And this site is very unique because I'm not happy with the fact, as a design engineer, geometrically, the site doesn't work well for parking, but what it works very well for is for emergency vehicles, space, and queuing. And there's a lot of asphalt there that we can't use for parking because we have to allow for such things like that. Is that a question?
It certainly helps. Do you plan to, I mean, I suppose, people waiting out in their cars, cars running, queuing up, hanging around, no appointments?
No, it usually doesn't particularly take that long because, the other thing, oh, by the way, I didn't, I want to reiterate, is we also have a Plan B implemented in the site plan set, which is, you know, turn on a parking plan, so we'll have reinforced grass and gravel, et cetera, that treats the stormwater that is needed, that we can have people park it on the exterior as well.
I did see that. I was a little confused because there were two parking plans.
That's why.
Thank you for clarifying.
If we need it, that's why, that's part of the Plan B. But typically, these people are in and out, and they're 10 minutes. And for the most part, the reality situation is these people are placing the orders in advance, and they know that to get in and out again. And that's why you're not seeing the big rush that you see at all dispensaries, because I've done several of these. You know, that ooh-ah that you saw in Wareham when it first started, in reality, doesn't exist. You know, they'll have the initial one, and the initial one is typically, is worked out with the police, worked out with the traffic management plan, and worked out with detailed officer or offices as needed to mitigate just what you're asking. And shortly after it opens, they've been disappearing.
They can deal with on-site security in the parking lot at all times.
Excellent.
So they'll make sure that any car, you know, they'll make sure cars are parking where they're supposed to, and the traffic is moving along. They'll be checking IDs at that time as well, before people even come into the building.
Checking people's IDs before they even come into the building? What's up with that?
21 years of age, come on, come into the building. And they'll check, a security person will ask for an ID, who are they, their age, even to be on the premises. You can't go on the premises. If you come on and you're under 18, I mean, under 21, or you don't have a valid license, you'd be asked to leave.
So you can't have kids sitting in the car?
Yeah, you can't have kids sitting in the car or anything like that, really.
Any other question? I was just going to say, this is Bruce Mackey. We can look at the queuing, Connelly, when we go to the site and, and using the plan and actually see whether the pavement is, or the parking area is, we can take a better look, you know, what's on the side of the road, what's in the parking lot, how cars can be queued, and actually, that even could be put on the plan, too. I don't, I haven't looked through all the plans, I don't know if you have a queuing, any kind of, anything that shows that in the parking area at all. Of course, you're just going to go in and you're just going to park in the, in the parking areas. Okay, but we can look at that in the field anyway when we go. Okay, is there, do you have any more presentation or?
Yeah. We'll continue on. Next, I'm going to ask Dan Chauvin, President of MSG Life Safety, is now going to review the security and fire controls that we will have in place at our location. Dan, can you fly?
Good evening, folks. I'm Dan Chauvin, President of MSG Life Safety. Thanks for having us. So I'm going to walk you through the security measures in place, integrated security solution that we've proposed and designed for this facility. The purpose of the integrated security system is obviously to protect the people, property, the product, the patrons, ensure that facility is secure in accordance with CMR, 935 CMR, with specific attention to Section 500. The design of this system is done by NICE-Set certified professionals. I'm a NICE-Set Level 4, which is the highest level of engineering technologists available nationally. Our design employs prescriptive design, meaning the code tells us, dictates to us exactly what we have to do. 935 CMR is very specific in what has to be done, but we also added some performance-based design, meaning there's some best practices that we've employed to beef it up a little bit. Not a lot of that because the prescriptive design or requirements is so stringent, you know, you don't have a lot of leeway. We have 37 years' experience, it's not about me, but I actually was involved with building this building. I did Carver Police, the library, the town hall back in the day, so I've been involved in this community quite a bit. I serve all of New England. We are a corporate S, meaning we're registered with the Department of Public Safety. All of our employees, right down to administrative assistants, have to be quarried every two years. I submit that data to the Commonwealth to maintain our S license. So we are an S corp. We have a S license with the Commonwealth. The systems, first of all, we've done many projects, including marijuana facilities, grow facilities, retail facilities, prisons, schools, and so on and so forth. The systems, it's an integrated security system, but it's comprised of several components. So we'll start with some of the basics. The intrusion detection system, somewhat self-explanatory. The key with intrusion detection, if you think of something you might have in your home, motion detectors, keypads, door contacts, the key with the intrusion detection system is, it has to be fully redundant, meaning so like if it was in your home, you'd have two systems that are serving your home, if you think of it that way. There are two active security systems, each report to a UL-listed central station simultaneously. So if any one system fails, the other system's already in place. That's pretty, that's pretty serious, high security. And that's mandated by 935, so that's included. 100% coverage, every door, every window, motion detection, 100% coverage. I'm sorry?
Tell them what that code is, the marijuana code.
935 CMR, Section 500. Yep, that's the, that's the section. There's other codes in play, 780 CMR, Mass Building Code, most current edition, NEC, obviously, we need to get installation and electrical practices. But as far as the system design goes, it's straight out of 935. Again, not to be redundant, 100% coverage, 24-hour backup. The code mandates four. We're giving you 24 hours of battery. It's not a big deal, but it's out of protection. Again, I mentioned motion detectors, door contacts. These systems report to a UL-listed central station 24/7, 365 operators, comes up on the screen. They send emails, they send texts, they make phone calls. We give them a call tree, so obviously, we've met with the police department, it obviously goes there, we go to the owners, managers, you know, the responders, if there's an event, off-hours. There's also panic switches that tie into the intrusion system, so you have, you know, your point-of-sale people, and then on their desk, if there's an incident, there's a problem, that reports through the intrusion detection system. Goes right to the UL, UL-listed central station, who turn, rolls the police. All of these systems have to be tested every 30 days. As a point of reference, Fire Lump Systems, National Code, NFPA 72 dictates that a fire lump system, each component is tested once a year. With this, every component is tested every 30 days. So that's, that's pretty serious. So we go to the next one, we'll talk a little bit about video surveillance. So the videos are all HD, high definition. We're using megapixel cameras, in most cases, six to eight megapixel cameras. So the resolution is exceptional. It's not the old TDL, like the old days. The big ticket here is storage for the owners, significant amount of horsepower to store that type of data, the size of that data, for 90 days in accordance with 935. So the storage is, is pretty significant. They have the ability to create still images, both off-recorded video and live video. So if you have a situation, the operator, the security operator, can click a button, a macro, keep a lot of still image printed out, you've got that person. Also, through the recordings, you can do the same thing. We, you have to have the ability to export this data for forensics, forensic purposes, and all of that data, those files, those video clips are waterlogged for authentication. So that's part of the system. The video system also integrates with the point-of-sale system. So anytime a purchase is made, the video, it's flagged and attached to that point-of-sale. You make a purchase, you're, you're on candid camera, so to speak. 100% interior coverage. Anywhere in that building, anywhere in that building, you're on, you're on candid camera, and it's recorded for those 90 days and stored. It's fully integrated with other systems, including intrusion and access control, which I'll talk about access in a moment. The intrusion system, if there's an event, somebody comes in at 2:00 in the morning that shouldn't be there, it's a breach, you go real-time recording, which is 30 images per second. It flags that, that recording, associates it with that event on the access control, so when they do those forensics, they can marry the event. Easy to retrieve. Same thing with the access control. During the day, if somebody got into a restricted area that shouldn't breach the door, they call it, gone through without a valid card read or key fob read, that's an event. That event is, is queued up on the surveillance, it's associated with the event, and you have a forensic trail that ties it all together. So that's, that's fully integrated. I think I hit all my bullets without reading. All right, so access control, for those of you who are familiar, card readers or key fobs, right? Card reader on the, you know, point of entry to a security area, card or key, in this case, everything's badges, so there's a badging workstation, all employees are being badged, photo ID, their name, the whole nine yards. Any contractor, any visitor outside of a patron, if they're there for any period of time, gets badged, so they walk around with a badge. We restrict access based on users and user groups. So for example, you saw an architectural detail of the basement. It's our understanding that only, only, not even any employees, only certain personnel are allowed to go into that area, because that's where the product storage is and the safe and so forth. So that's a user. So maybe one or two users, you create a group, they have access to that area and that area alone. Follow what I'm saying? There's also a secure delivery gate, the motorized gate, that is a stand-in with a long-range card reader. Obviously, not anybody can flash a card and open that gate. It's restricted by user or user group. Again, everything is integrated, so if there's an event on the access control, it will report to the central station, it will be recorded on the video system. There are remote releases, for example, all activity, all ingress egress through this facility is controlled, obviously. So after the ID checks and the patron comes in, they report to the security desk, that security operator has the ability to allow them into the secure area to make a purchase. So that's a remote release. Even the pressing that button is recorded, time of day, and stored on that access control Fully battery-backed up for 24 hours, so you still have access control in the event of AC power loss. The logging of activity, who, what, and where, you know, excuse me, who, where, and when, the what is, the video. The video gives you that piece. The access control, Dan Chauvin flashed his card to the, to the safe, what's today? Wednesday, 7:00. 7:00 PM, blah, blah, blah. That's all recorded and stored. And again, that's also going to give you a video clip associated with that activity. So you've got, you've got the whole forensic trail. I think I hit all those bullets pretty good. And then there's a video entry system, so it's certain, the points of entry and egress, you have a, it's a video entry station. The security operator sees who you are. Two-way communication, which allows for authentication of who's at that door. And then that security operator, after they verify who it is and see the image, has the ability to release that, let them in, or in this case, let them in. Those door entry stations are located, as I say, at all entries and exit points, and then the master station's security desk is obvious, and then at some of the manager's offices, they also have master stations to facilitate that effort. And then I'll get on the, like, maybe 10,000-foot scale. All the installers, you know, when you're doing security, have to have a public safety license. So even the, even the gentleman who pull the cable, obviously, they have to have their journeyman's license. We hold our contractor's license, full licensure, but they're quarried, and this is before the facility even opens. So these guys are scrutinized before they even walk in the door, even the cable pullers, the cable jockeys, if you will. All system control commission will be installed in a restricted space with limited access. So what that means is there's a head end, obviously, there's a rack with the recorders and the controllers and so on. Think of a big computer closet, if you will. That's very restricted. Not many people can get in there. The owner is, and again, it's flagged, if you, you have to have the right credential, the right authorization to even get in that space. So that's, that's secured. The security desk is somewhat command central during normal operation hours. That person has the ability to allow traffic to move through. They also see all the images. They have the ability to do what they have to do, they have panic capabilities. All these systems are completely IP-based, without getting overly technical, computer-based systems, cameras are an appliance on the network, card readers are an appliance on the network. And what, there's a couple of things that that brings value. If the police department, which we asked and they didn't want it, but it's available, if they wanted to be able to see images on a PDA and a cruiser, we can enable that. We can allow that wireless access on a PDA. Also flexibility in programming. If any authority, having jurisdiction, needs change for whatever reason, because, for whatever reason, fully programmable, we can, we can make that change for those folks. The system, I mentioned 30 days testing, there's also an annual audit mandated by the state. So annually, bill of health certificate of, you know, good standing, fitness report, I believe, is the term. The system is fully supervised. And what does that mean, fully supervised? So any component that fails, any wire that's pinched, nicked, cut, grounded, whatever the case may be, that will automatically report to a UL-listed, UL-listed central station in the prescribed period of time. So it's not like somebody's going to come in here and fake this thing out. It can't happen, it's fully supervised. And again, redundant connections to UL-listed central station. And the reason why I harp on that, that's, that's very, very high security. That is very high security. Most, any facility doesn't have two connections, but in these facilities, that's a mandate. We don't restrict egress, more on the life safety side. We're also doing the fire alarm system, but that's really prescriptive-based, right? The code tells me exactly what I have to do. I won't bore you with those details. We submit it, what they call a tier-two narrative and documents, point-to-point diagrams through the building department, to the fire department. There's not a lot of, you know, gloss and glitter in that, that evolution, okay? But the key here is that we also integrate with fire alarms, so that in the event of an emergency, we're not, we're not restricting any egress. And you don't anyway, you can never restrict egress. And again, I mentioned the bottom bullet, it's fully programmable. So it's flexible, it has flexibility, it's not very rigid. And that's really all I got at 7:00.
It sounds more secure than a prison.
It's very secure. It's the most secure building. If for 2,500 square feet, it's very secure. And thank you very much, I really.
Thank you.
The state license, with the approval of a provisionary license, that's when we will be able to move forward with the construction and the outfitting of the facility. No marijuana establishment may commence operations until final inspection and approval by local building inspectors, fire marshals, Cannabis Control Commission, and/or any other state or local regulatory agencies. All final licenses are issued and permission granted by the Cannabis Control Commission. The state license must be renewed annually, and at that time, the town of Carver will be asked for their input on that. So every year, we've got to go back and get our license, and the town gets an opportunity to speak at that time as well. Capeway Cannabis will sell all products legally allowed by law and in compliance with state regulations. Cannabis products will include top-shelf cannabis flower, pre-rolls, concentrates, oils, edibles, beverages, tinctures, and topicals. We will also sell a select retail inventory on non-cannabis dry goods associated with the preparation, use, and ingestion of cannabis. All cannabis and other marijuana products will be produced in accordance with mass law and regulations and sourced only from licensed marijuana distributors. All products will have been tested by a third-party analytical laboratory for potency, pesticides, heavy metals, molds, and other contaminants. All test results will be available to the consumer. All marijuana products will be secured, stored securely, as Dan talked about, within an alarmed vault, under 24-hour surveillance. No customers will have direct access to marijuana until the sale is completed. Capeway Cannabis has a zero-tolerance policy for onsite consumption. Any customers positively identified consuming marijuana products onsite shall be immediately banned from the store for not less than one year, and the incident report shall be filed with the CCC, the Cannabis Control Commission. Capeway Cannabis employees positively identified in consuming marijuana products on the premises will be immediately dismissed from employment, will be banned from the store for not less than a year, and the incident will be reported and filed with the Cannabis Control Commission. Private security personnel and strategic placement of security cameras will work to ensure that no customer or employees are consuming marijuana on the premises, including in the parking lot and in parked cars. No cannabis products shall be manufactured in any way nor packaged in any such way to directly be appealing or marketed toward children. All cannabis and other marijuana products will be packaged in compliance with all child safeties, child-resistant safety regulations, and will be clearly labeled. The location will not constitute a nuisance to the community as defined by law. Our hours of operations will be Monday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Sunday from 12:00 to 6:00. Deliveries will be staggered during major normal business hours. The location is projected to serve a few hundred customers per day, half of what a normal fast-food restaurant or coffee shop would do. We're prepared to be proact, to take proactive measures, as we talked about, to mitigate any traffic concerns. State allows the town to collect a 3% sales tax on the retail sale of marijuana and marijuana projects. This is projected to be hundreds of thousands of dollars annually for the life of the business by year three. Carver will also receive increased property taxes for the site and excise taxes on our equipment. The host-community agreement between Carver and Capeway Cannabis will allow for the community, for a community impact fee of 3% of total sales for up to five years to offset any potential taxpayer burden associated with opening of our business, resulting in several hundreds, thousands of dollars to the town of Carver. Diversion. Capeway Cannabis considers diversion a top priority and will meet or exceed all state regulations to prevent diversion to the black market and especially to children. All employees will pass state background checks. Security protocol will make the establishment one of the most secure buildings in town, as you've heard. Access to marijuana products will be restricted to authorized personnel only and will require key-coded access. State-compliant seed-to-sale tracking software will monitor the flow of every cannabis product in the production chain. What that really means is when the grow facility puts that seed in the ground, it gets a tracking number with it, a barcode. That barcode goes with that seed till it becomes a plant, to whatever product it gets turned into, till it gets delivered to us, and then it goes out the door. Customers must be 21-plus and have a valid state-issued ID to enter the establishment. Age will be verified by security personnel inspection in, using industry-standard technology. No person under 21 or without a valid state-issued ID will be allowed to enter the store or remain on the premise. State-compliant seed-to-sale tracking will monitor the traffic of every cannabis product to the point-of-sale. No customer shall be allowed to purchase more than the legal limit per any visit to Capeway Cannabis. In the event of a prolonged power outage, crash, in internal seed-to-sale tracking software or computers, or disruption in state monitoring systems, Capeway Cannabis will immediately cease all operations until the systems return to normal functionality. In the event of an inventory discrepancy or evidence of diversion, all operations will cease and desist pending an investigation. Any person positively identified in the diversion of, or an attempt to divert marijuana products to minors shall be immediately banned from Capeway Cannabis, an incident report filed with the CCC, and law enforcement will be notified. Her inventory systems. A comprehensive inventory-tracking control system is essential to the security of the facility. It allows Capeway Cannabis to maintain awareness and control over where products are at any given stage in the distribution process. Capeway Cannabis will utilize a fully-integrated enterprise application software package that includes inventory management, sales management, and employee tracking, as well as point-of-sale system. In addition, daily inventory tracking procedures, a monthly inventory count will be conducted by the entire inventory department to ensure absolute accuracy and accountability. Positive impact. Capeway Cannabis will create dozens of high-paying jobs with full benefits. We will also utilize local contractors when they're available to do our work. We will also make annual contributions to local nonprofit organizations that focus on veterans and their families, youth drug and alcohol prevention, and Area 58 Carver's community cable TV. Ongoing community education seminars will happen annually, each year, and the annual tax revenue is in the hundreds of thousands of dollars for the town of Carver. Thank you, we look forward to working with the town of Carver.
Actually, Mr. Jeff, Kevin Robinson, my question was answered regarding prolonged period of time where we live in Carver, that the power goes on an awful lot, so. I didn't know if it was necessary to ask if you planned on having a generator to...
Probably will.
...a backup, but you would have to close down if you didn't have the generator, is that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
How many employees are, Cornelius Shea, how many employees are expected to be on-site at any time?
Probably no more than, it depends, you know, it depends upon the time in business, actually. So, you know, we're planning on having anywhere from six to 10 employees on-site at any time.
How many employee parking spaces were...
So we have 29 spaces. Our traffic studies show that we would use 18 with the traffic counts, so we have 11 extra spaces. I don't believe that we'll use all of those.
Right, I was just curious because I noticed two of them are listed in front of the security gate that handles the deliveries, and I didn't know if the truck pulls up, the employees are going to run out and move their cars.
Because they're employees, they can easily move them. Yeah, easily move them. And they know when the schedule is, when there's a stack, and they know when they will be coming. And one of our staff will meet that delivery truck, bring it inside, and then meet a second person to take the delivery down into the, so there'll be three people present when the deliveries are being made.
All right, any other questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Ellen Sodillo, non-medical and medical.
We're going for just a recreational license, not a medical license.
Would you go for a medical license in the future?
Not at this location, I don't think. We see that medical end of that kind of phasing out. There was a need for it in the beginning when the state approved medical marijuana only, and then recreational came right in behind it, and the sales in medical marijuana are dropping because people can just go in, you don't have to go get a medical card every year, go see your doctor and all of those things. So we're planning just to have this as a recreational facility.
So no, they don't have to pay taxes?
There is a small tax break when you purchase medical marijuana.
All right, I have, I've got a series of questions, and some of them may seem a little bit on the facetious side, but I think it's important that, that it's discussed.
John Gasky.
Sorry, yes, John Gasky, speaking real quick. So with regards to, starting out on the security side of things, you guys have a pretty significant security system set up and planned and for everything and whatnot. What, when you're looking at this type of security system, what's the need for that high of a level of security system, and what other businesses tend to lean towards that level of security?
Well, I think the need for it is because it's the standard set by the Cannabis Control Commission. There, the state sets that security, so we're meeting their needs. You can't do it any other way.
Think of, think of Massachusetts Building Code, the security, 935 CMR dictates prescriptive measures necessary relative to security, not a lot of gray matter.
Right, I understand that, and that's why it seems like the question, that's why these questions may seem, that's why these questions may seem a little bit on the facetious side. That, that, I mean, if this was, if this was your business and this, and this code was not in place, would this be the security system you'd be looking at?
Well, let me just say this. Being a fiscally responsible person, you could probably do it for probably a hundred or so thousand dollars less, but it's the requirement of the state, it's what they wrote. We would make the facility as secure as possible, we don't want to have any issues there. We've owned several businesses, we still own several businesses. The last thing you want to do is hear that your building's been broken into or that there's been a security problem. Those aren't things that a business owner ever wants to have to deal with. You know, we would make it, if it was our own, we would make it as secure as we needed to.
Now, with regards to your security personnel that are meeting people outside to, to check IDs and whatnot, are those personnel armed?
No.
Why not?
There's no requirement to have them armed.
Okay. I mean, it, I'm just, again, it goes back to the questions about security. If you're looking, if the concern is about problems, I mean, you're buzzing people in and everything else like that, it's...
They're in the parking lot and they're checking IDs and keeping traffic moving and those types of things. If there was an issue with someone, that person who they're having an issue with can't even get near the building. There's no need to have any firearms or anything like that. The security person that will be inside will be monitoring what's going on as well with audio and so forth, and could call the police in two seconds. We'd leave that gun carrying up to the police, which I think they'd be happy with.
Now, with regards to moving on from those guys, I don't really see anything on the plans that, where these guys hang out. Are they...
So they'll be hanging out, some of the other locations have just put up temporary tents and stuff like that, depending upon the weather. We'll have an area over, probably over where the other building is, over there, but they'll, they'll be walking and moving through the parking lot most of the time.
Okay, so in the dead of winter, these guys are going to be out and about all the time?
Yeah, that's, that's the goal, yeah.
All right. Some hardy individuals that are going to be working there.
The workway that will show a check-in area on the sidewalk as well, that's one of the spots.
Right.
Okay, but is that, is that shelter from the storm, so to speak?
They would have to set up a pad.
We'll do our best to protect them, but it's part of a job. It's a job, you know, there's plenty of security guys that stand outside of buildings and so forth and check IDs and that kind of stuff, in all different weather. You know, plenty of people work in inclement weather.
All right. So with regards to entering the site, is there going to be, is there somebody sitting behind the counter buzzing people in?
Yes. Yeah, that was true.
Now, is that, is that a security requirement from the, from the state, or, I mean, the people are being, you're already being, you're already being checked and inspected, what's the, what's the, what's the need for...
It's part of one of the state requirements, is that we check their ID when they come into the building as well.
Control and head control, you can't let multiple people enter, that's why, sort of authentication, the ID, also with the video confirmation, the security, that's a one-at-a-time situation. It's not, no lawyer can sign, you can't get signed out.
Right, well, that's, I mean, that's what the security personnel outside are for, right?
It's redundant, but...
All right. As far as, as far as items that you're going to be selling, what concentrations of THC are you looking at as far as your products are concerned?
We're looking at all different types of THC and the different percentages and so forth. That's something we could get for you as we get a little further down the road with the products that are available. We don't want to quote anything at this time, but we can make that available to the town, to you, you know, you'll be able to see it on our websites.
All right. To me, that's a, that's a fairly important thing, because when you start getting into...
The state has a standard. We're going to adhere to all the... The state has a standard, we're gonna adhere to all the state standards for THC and so forth.
Now, the, I know this is gonna seem like an obvious question, and, you know, the whole "there's no such thing" is a dumb question, and this is probably gonna fit into one of those, yeah, there probably is really a dumb question, and this is probably one of them. As far as, when you're talking about marijuana not being consumed on the premises, if you're not the one operating a vehicle, what's the problem?
What's, it's against the law. Regulations don't allow it, public consumption, just like alcohol.
All right. Okay.
Again, we're not gonna let you loiter in our parking lot or anything like that, you're gonna come in, conduct your business, and move on your way.
Yeah. All right, well, that's, that's all I have for, that's all I have for now. Work on some more here later.
Yeah, we do, we will have another meeting, so anything that you think of, we can be asked at the, at the next meeting. Anybody else have any other questions before I open this up to anybody in the audience? Seeing nobody, this is a public hearing, so is there anyone, if you could raise your hand, if you would like to come up and, and make a comment or ask a question? Okay, if you, if you come sit in the chair, please, give us your name and address. And what you could do is, I don't know how many questions, if you could ask, do you have a bunch of questions, or?
No.
Just one. We make your comment, and then we'll try to have somebody come and sit and then answer your questions.
Okay. Kevin Ridington, 312, 314 Tremont Street, I'm right across the street from this, where the church was.
Oh, do you have a business there, or is it-
Yes.
Oh, it's the gas business?
Yes.
Propane gas?
And, and so my concern was the security, lighting in the parking lot, and whether cars are gonna, or kids gonna be hanging around in the parking lot and stuff like that. I've been in, in storage facilities, trucking facilities, so I know the, the inside of security systems are pretty well tightened there. But, there's also, from, from what it was understood, that there's gonna be cameras and audio in the parking lot too, monitoring people and license plates. If there's anything suspicious, then you'd be reporting that?
Correct.
Okay.
We'll, as we said, we'll have on-staffed security in the parking lot, as well as someone manning our security station inside, which will monitor all of those videos and audio.
Okay.
Like I said, you know, the owner's allowed to hang around, they come in, they do their business, and then they move outside.
Yes, 'cause, I mean, that's a busy road, it's a highway out there, and, and, you know, people come, they turn around, they, they just, you know, in and out and stuff like that, and, you know, if it's just, I'm just concerned about security.
As we said, this will be the most secure site in town of Carver.
Yeah, if, if, I would make a recommendation, oh, because, you know, like one of the board members did, is that the 24-hour battery backup, well, 24 hours don't go very long with all the security cameras and stuff like that, so they might want to do a generator for, for the security, the police department, the fire department, everybody else also. But that was, that was just my questions about the security-wise.
Okay, did they all get answered?
Yeah, that's, you know, with cameras on, just wanted to make it clear that it was also out in the parking lot too, and the surrounding, and the areas and stuff like that. Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome, thank you.
Cameras for your business, let me have it all.
Anybody else in the audience? Anybody else that has any questions, any comments?
I think that's the rest of them, it's our team.
That's it? Oh, the rest is your team?
Yes.
So, that's it, okay. I expected a lot more people, but it just goes to show.
This usually is about what, two shows up.
Yeah.
Okay, well, all right.
I would suggest that unless you have anything more to present to us, we should maybe schedule a site visit and see when the members can meet to go on-site. We'll take a look at the buildings, if we could have, like, the parking lot corners marked out. The buildings are already there, so that's pretty easy.
Parking lot's already paved, correct?
There's pavement there, we're going to replace it.
Okay.
Yeah, so none of the existing, there's no existing design on that.
So, probably other than that, is there anything else that any of the members, planning board members would like to see out there? And, okay, so let's schedule a time. I know that we did, our last solar visit was on a Wednesday at noon time. When will our next meeting be, Jim?
It'll be, we have it scheduled for January 26th.
Oh, January 26th.
Yeah, back to a Tuesday night.
Yeah.
And I'll be in town hall.
Okay, so we get, we get, we have a, we've got quite a few weeks between the, probably the sooner we do it though, the better, just in case we get five feet of snow between now and then. I don't know, when, when would, when's a good time for us to meet? Say we do, say we did a Wednesday, oh no, see, what did we do? Well, we did a Tuesday for the site walk, for the solar field, so how about the 15th or the 22nd, or the 29th of this month? Would that be a good day at noon time for-
The 29th would work for us.
I won't be available from the 17th to 1st.
How about the 29th, would you be?
That's somewhere between the 17th and January 1st.
Oh, okay. All right.
We could do the 15th.
Yeah, I'm great next week, I mean, I'll fit it in anytime.
You say the 29th is good?
It is good, it's good for us.
Good for us. How about Jim, Mr. Walsh?
Good for the board is a good, so.
But that's an easy one, say, say if you missed the site walk, you know, we could set up another one, 'cause that isn't like going out in the middle of the-
We could meet you out there anytime, if you're available after the person.
I appreciate that.
We could accommodate you, that's not a problem.
And with the first, maybe the first week of January, would that work for you?
Yeah, that would be fine too, yeah.
We could do that.
And then that way, try to get as many board members-
Yeah, that might be, that might be better for me, as well.
Say Tuesday, the 5th?
Give that a shot, give me a chance, I can, I can schedule something with work anyways.
What, what time would you be available, John?
Like I said, I have to, I have to make special arrangements with work.
Oh, okay, so, so it'd be better to be at the end of the day, at the beginning of the day, rather than the noon time?
Beginning of the day is always the best time for me. So, without, without, like I said, I can, I can make special arrangements, I just have to give enough notifications, so.
Okay. So how about nine o'clock?
We'll talk to Mr. Deion too.
Yeah, go ahead, make your date, I'll be there.
You, you can, you can make it happen, Ellen?
I, I can make that happen.
What day of the week is that?
That's Tuesday.
Tuesday, January 5th, nine o'clock.
Would that work for you?
That would work for us.
Nine AM.
How about Kevin?
That'll work.
Okay, so let's schedule the site visit at nine o'clock, Tuesday, January 5th.
And then we'll be back on your agenda on the 26th?
Be back on the agenda on the 26th, seven o'clock. Well, that's what we call sub, seven o'clock hour, many people we see, but you'll be in, on that meeting. All right, so, let's, let's continue, I'll, let's see, entertain a motion to continue the application on Cape Way Cannabis for January 26th at seven o'clock.
I'll entertain him, I'll make a motion to continue the-
Application?
Application for Cape Way Cannabis until January 26th.
At seven o'clock, yeah.
Seven o'clock.
Okay, so that was Kevin Robinson made the motion.
Second.
And John Gasky, second. Any further discussion? Those a favor, do a roll call.
Cornelius Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
Okay, so that was unanimous. So, we will see you January 5th. Okay, thank you for the presentation.
Please be careful driving home, there's bound to be a lot of black ice out there tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know, 25 foot is gonna come, come by you quickly.
I saw one, I was walking through, no, I'm Costco, the other day.
Yeah, I think we should be good.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I, I don't know, it was too big to fit my house, I can't get that through my door, much less, 80 inches, I was like, that's taller than my ceiling in my house, I think, something like that, it's crazy. Clearly, I'm a lot of- Right. Yep, it's like driving a movie theater size.
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna continue with discussion on Lindia's Path, and I think Mr. Walsh will have to start this off.
Yeah, I just put this on as a placeholder in case a developer on Lindia's Path needed to come in, but they went ahead, apparently, I haven't been out there, but apparently they went ahead and they put in the sidewalk as for plan, so, so that's, you know, where we stand at the moment. One of the thoughts I had with this, and then maybe some other projects, was to see, we wanted to maybe take a Saturday to go out and do a little field trip to each of these, some of these different sites that we're talking about, so the planning members could, you know, new and old, and myself, because there's a lot of projects that have been approved that I haven't been involved with, but at least you'll get familiar with some of the ones that are kind of active right now, and which ones might be coming up, throw it out there as an idea, I don't know if the members would like to do that, or we could-
Sure, I'd be willing to, yeah, visit, visit any of these on a, on a Saturday, take a, take a look at it with you.
And then we can, you know, between maybe now and the site visit, just, you can figure out which ones you want to see, and then set things up at the next meeting properly.
Okay, all right.
How's that sound for people available on a Saturday?
Don't wait till it gets too cold for me, Jim.
True.
Is it coming Saturday? I don't know.
Well, no, no, we'll, we'll discuss it, I guess, I guess Jim's gonna come up with some projects-
Oh, okay.
-that might need a look at by the planning board, or that we can familiarize ourselves. If you want to explain it, because it was a lot of noise.
We have some of these, you know, for example, Lindia's Path, that we've had discussions on, and we'll probably have some more discussions on, the smallest, biggest subdivision known to mankind, because of amount of time it's taken. And then, you know, there's Gilbert Estates, which has changed ownership from Jack Williams to another party. Then there's some of the solar projects, where we have some that kind of in the process of being completed, and then some, you know, where planning board members might want to, like, for example, Gate Street is, they have all the solar panels up, members might want to, you know, go and take a look at that, as something that was approved previously, but it's kind of in that process where they're coming to completion, you know, just kind of go out, see some of these sites, and then, you know, try to help give a better understanding of them. That was just sort of an idea I had, I don't know if members want to do that, or no, we could set up for smaller groups to kind of go out, and, you know, for those who want to do it.
This is on a follow-up basis?
This is just kind of going out and just, because we have kind of a new, newish board, and getting everyone out just to kind of see some of the sites that have been approved in the past, and some of these projects, they kind of take their time to come forward, be, you know, be kind of nice to kind of go out and say, okay, here's this project on Gate Street that was approved several years ago, now they're getting to the point where they're nearing completion, it'd be nice to kind of go out and kind of see them.
It's an excellent idea.
So you have Lindia's Path, you know, you have neighbors complaining, you know, the developers trying to finish, but at least get people out there, we take a look at the subdivision, and then, you know, be kind of fresh in everyone's mind of, you know, what this looks like, and then, and you kind of take a look at it, compare to what's on paper, and say, okay, maybe, even troubleshoot a little bit, this is a, you know, small subdivision that there's just a lot of problems with that happened over the years.
Is that the one that, is that the one that was at the last planning board meeting that they were talking about?
Right, we had the residents-
Not the planning board meeting, but the, was it the planning board meeting they talked about?
Yeah, they came, yeah, neighbors did, yeah.
Yeah, the neighbors complained about the sidewalks and whatnot?
Right.
Yeah, I'm willing to do that. I'd like to see what's going on.
Yeah, that's right around the corner from my house, so.
Oh, is it? Yeah.
And then, yeah, that way, you know, we can maybe pick some sites, and then, you know, maybe we don't have, don't have to do a ton of sites, but maybe over time, we can go out and just take a look at some of the different projects that have been either approved, completed, or in process, just to get a feel for what's going on, and, you know, and it's, it's a big difference to see something on a plan, and then you actually go and you see the building out there, or the solar project, and you say, okay, is this what we envisioned when I was looking at this, and we're asked to, you know, do an approval on it? So I think that helps bring some reality to some of the, some of these projects.
Now, if we had over three planning board members together like that, would that be considered a planning board meeting?
I would just consider a site visit, you know, you're not really-
Okay.
-meeting to discuss anything, you're just meaning to go and see a project, and then maybe you, if you had questions, you could just jot them down, and then when we got to the meeting, we could kind of, you know, discuss them, you know, to say, okay, hey, maybe this would have been a better thing to do at this particular site than, you know, what was actually implemented.
Okay, yeah, I mean, yeah, so that's sort of the way we conduct site visits now, we don't really discuss anything, we go just to view, and then bring our discussion to the, the next planning board meeting, supposedly, yeah. All right. Yeah, that's, that sounds good, especially Lindia's Path, that is interesting, and there's a story to tell behind that, which everybody could be-
Probably more to come, you know.
Which everybody could, you know, be educated about, because, you know, things happen there that go over, so that things like that don't happen in the future. So you'll come up with some areas, and then we'll come up with a time and date for those things.
Yeah, so I have to do some work to, in some cases where, you know, it's private property, we took the contact of, you know, either the project applicant or the landowner to get permission, to go onto, you know, the property for a solar project.
Right, right.
Lindia's Path, we can just go onto the roadway, we won't have trouble, or up to, say, the other project on High Street, the Gilbert Estates.
Okay. All right, thanks, Jim. So, planning board member notes, well, since we're not gonna have another meeting until January, I'd like to, although the planning board members will have a site visit, but I'd like to visit it, I'd like to say to everybody, happy- to say to everybody, happy Hanukkah and a merry Christmas to everyone, not only on the board here, and members of our video staff, and Mr. Walsh, and all the people in Kava. Are there any other planning board member, members that have any other thoughts they'd like to...
I'd like to second that.
The zoning bylaw subcommittee is meeting on the 14th, if I'm not mistaken.
That's what we have scheduled, yeah.
And will we be able to zoom into it?
Haven't made those arrangements yet, but could.
I was just curious.
We could set it up that way.
But people are welcome to show up in person as far as state regulations and mandates go during this...
Yeah, I know they did a step back, but I'm not sure how that affects the meeting capacity.
Twenty-five. If they have any questions or comments, they'd like to make, they're more than welcome to email them in to the zoning bylaw study committee?
Yep.
So we'd like to hear from what the people have to say.
You planning to be there too?
I am, I'll be there live.
You'll be there, okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Shea. Planning director notes.
So Elaine Weston and I interviewed a candidate to be our next recording secretary. She works part-time as a physical therapist based, she actually works down in Hyannis, so she does a reverse commute that I do. She lives in Rochester. So we interviewed her, and so she'll be with us for her first meeting on the 26th of January. We are gonna do kind of like a test. She's gonna watch the tape from this meeting and work on coming up some minutes, just to get some practice, and then she'll be coming in, starting that. So she's kind of restricted to Tuesdays only because of her part-time schedule. She works evenings on the other nights, so we can't move meetings around like we used to. But, and then we're also working on, so the recording secretary for the Conservation Commission is also resigning, and so we're also working for another person, you know, to do the Conservation Commission, but also see if they're available as a backup for some of our other voids and commissions. So that's my note on that.
All right, thank you, Jim. So we have the minutes of 11:18, 2020.
And then also, I include in the packets the meeting, the minutes from 10:13, so we didn't have the minutes themselves in the last meeting, and so at the last meeting, we said we would table the minutes until this meeting, but we didn't get listed under the minutes, so you have minutes for October 13, 2020, and then also November 18, 2020.
Okay, so we have those two to vote on tonight?
That's correct.
Okay. So did everybody have a chance to take a look at those minutes?
I was not here for the 13th, but I looked at the 18th.
Okay. We could start, did everybody look at the 13th? Okay, so let's, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of 10:13, 2020.
Cornelius Shea motions to approve the meeting minutes of 10:13, 2020.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
So Ellen, second it. Further discussion, those in favor?
Cornelius Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson was absent.
So abstains. Bruce Mackey, aye.
John Gasky, aye.
Ellen Sodillo, aye.
All right, so we had one, four yeses and one abstention. Yeah, that's what we did. All right, so we have the minutes of 11:18, 2020. So entertain a motion to approve the minutes of 11:18, 2020.
Cornelius Shea motions to approve the meeting minutes of 11:18, 2020.
And I'll second that, Kevin Robinson.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Further discussion, seeing none. Mr. Shea.
Cornelius Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
Okay, so that was unanimous. All right, our next meeting date will be January 26th. I talked with Jim about this, about meeting dates, and since our agenda isn't, since we don't have a lot on the agenda right now, and since we still have COVID cases going up, and we decided that we try to, right now, just do one meeting a month until things get better. So just don't want to see anybody being exposed more than they have to. So our next meeting will be on January 26th. So I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Cornelius Shea, second.
All right, so let's do Kevin, motion, and Cornelius, second. Those in favor?
Cornelius Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
John Gasky, aye.
Ellen Sodillo, aye.
All right, and thank you.